It is now five thirty, so we will begin our Adrian City Commission work study session for December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Benke.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present. At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. As we did last year, we're gonna do our audit presentation here at the work session. Then we do have action to accept the audit on your regular meeting agenda as well. But that's our first time tonight. I will kind of presage where we're going after that. I do want to add a discussion regarding the city attorney matter to the work session. So we have time to talk about that. So I'd like to do that if there's no objections after the audit presentation. But let's, let's go ahead and get started. With Brian Mosier here from Clark Schaefer Hackett, and he's gonna tell me, tell us all where we stood at the end of the last fiscal year.
All right.
Brian?
Great, thank you. I apologize for my cold. I have a six-month-old and a two-and-a-half-month-old at home, and it is the winter, so we have our winter colds going on. So thanks for having me. I'm Brian Mosier with Clark Schaefer Hackett, here to present the results of our audit that we conducted again this year. So if you want to go to the next slide, it'll talk first about the summary of the reports. So we actually issue three audit reports. One is your, our opinion on your financial statements. One is a report in accordance with government auditing standards, and that's required because you have more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenditures of federal awards. So you have to be audited in accordance with government auditing standards and also, and of course, with the uniform guidance. And that applies to those federal awards. Overall summary of the reports, we issued what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's commonly referred to as a clean audit opinion. And what that means is that the financial statements, as they're presented with our report, are materially correct based on all the testing. So that's the report you should hope to get with every audit that you have. The second report, the government auditing standards report, it focuses on internal controls and compliance. And that compliance is not necessarily with the federal programs. That's talked about in the next report, but compliance with your own rules, regulations, policies, procedures, various contracts, other grants that you may have. If we notice any material instances of noncompliance, we would report those to you. And also, if we noticed any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting, we would report those in this report as well. And we have none of those items to report. So very clean boilerplate report in that regard. Then the last report we issue is the report in accordance with Uniform Guidance, and this focuses on what we call major federal programs. So you receive several federal grants, expend several federal grants throughout the year. But the major program that we tested this year was the ARPA grant, which was by far your largest federal grant that you had this year. And under that report, we issue an opinion on compliance. The federal O M B lays out various compliance requirements that they want us to test with each federal program. So we test all of those, and then we would also report any material weaknesses in internal control over compliance with that program and any material instances of noncompliance with that program. And this year, we have none of those items to report. If you remember, last year, we did have a noncompliance item with reporting in regards to ARPA. That was corrected this year. There were no issues that we had this year with reporting or any other compliance requirements with ARPA. So again, a very clean boilerplate report in that regard as well. On the next slide, some required communications. There were no transactions, which lacked authoritative guidance, so no creative accounting going on. Everything was very clear on how it should be reported. There are also no material misstatements to the financial statements. So oftentimes, we may have adjustments under the scope of our audit. We did not have any of those items this year. And so that tells us that what you looked at throughout the year was probably materially correct as well. We have no outstanding disagreements with management. If we have questions on how to report things, we'll talk with Nathan or Greg or other individuals at the city. And we have, you know, we have no disagreements on how to report things or how to account for things in the financial statements. And there are no difficulties in dealing with management. So we not only work with the finance department, but we get reports from various departments throughout the city, and everybody's very cooperative and giving us what we need. So everything was very good as far as that goes. I'll go ahead and take a pause there to answer any questions anybody may have on the audit or the reports.
It said no significant deficiencies. What does that mean?
Yeah, so that's a very gray area. So materiality under audit is very clear. So we've set quantitative materiality thresholds, but we also look at it from a qualitative perspective. And basically, it's something that rises to the level that would affect the reader's decisions that they would make based on the financial statements. If anything is material, we would require you to adjust that, and we would have a material deficiency and, or a material weakness in internal control. Significant is up to auditor's judgment. It's a level that's less than material, but significant enough to bring to those thresholds of governance to your attention. So there's nothing that, that rose to that level. So it's even a step down from the materiality level. So there's nothing that was material or at that next level either.
Thank you.
The next slide starts looking at some kind of just high-level look at the financial statements. I'm looking at changes in assets and deferred outflows of resources. Really, the most significant change is cash and investments decreased by five and a half million dollars. Most of that was due to some of the capital expenditures that you all made in the last fiscal year, and you can see that reflected in capital assets that increased by two point three million dollars, which is your additions to capital assets, which were just over five million dollars less depreciation on those, on those assets. The deferred outflows of resources, that mainly relates to the pension plan. So that increased by two point five million dollars. So as your pension liability increases, that increase doesn't hit expense all in that first year. It's amortized through deferred outflows of resources over the next few years. Next slide, slide five, looks at changes in liabilities and deferred inflows. You had a large decrease in accounts to contracts payable of three point one million dollars. Most of that related to a lot of the energy improvements that are being done at City Hall that were payables at the end of last fiscal year. Long-term obligations, you paid down your long-term obligations to two point one million dollars. And then your net pension liability increased by six point four million dollars during the fiscal year. You know, what largely drives that increase in that pension liability is actuarial evaluations, which includes how did investments do compared to their expected rate of return that's built into those actuarial evaluations? And also, remember, the measurement period for this is calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. Investments did not do good in calendar year two thousand and twenty-two, and so that's the large driver of this increase in net pension liability. Slide six, it looks at net position at year-end, a more longer-term view, and this is just for governmental activities. So it's still on the full accrual basis of accounting. It includes all your long-term debt and assets. But it's just your governmental funds, so general funds, special revenue funds, capital projects funds, that's what's in governmental activities. You can see kind of a steady increase in that position up to thirty-one point three million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty-three. The breakdown of what's sitting in net position at year-end, most, similar to most local governments, most of your net position is in your net investment in capital assets. That's all of your capital assets, less depreciation and any capital-related debt. So that was about twenty-six point five million dollars. Your restricted net position, which is restricted for things like capital projects, debt service, grant restrictions, that was six point nine million dollars. And then on your financial statements, you have a negative three point three million dollars in unrestricted net position. Keep in mind, again, what's driving that is your large net pension liability, and this is not unusual for, for local governments. So you have a negative unrestricted net position. If we took off all that net pension accounting, you would have a positive fourteen point three million dollars. So it is that net pension liability that's driving that unrestricted negatives. Slide eight looks at the business-type activities. So this is wastewater, water, the capital project revolving fund, parking, and then dial-a-ride. Keep in mind, you see that decrease from twenty-two to twenty-three. Most of that is due to the spin-off of dial-a-ride. So all the assets from dial-a-ride left the city and went to the new transportation authority. So that caused about a million-dollar decrease just in that fund alone. So all the other business-type activities were pretty, pretty much break-even for the year. Slide nine looks at the breakdown of that position. So again, ninety percent or about forty point seven million dollars is in your net investments and capital assets within those business-type activities. You have restricted, which is restricted for debt service. So funds set aside to pay debt service is two point one million dollars. And then you have an unrestricted net position of two point five million dollars in business-type activities. Keeping in mind that while it's unrestricted in accounting terms, it's to be used for those funds. Slide ten looks, goes back to governmental activities and looks at revenues and expenses over the last few years. You can see revenues have increased from twenty-two to twenty-three after being fairly steady. It's up from eighteen point eight million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-two point six million dollars in two thousand and twenty-three. A lot of that is grant-driven. There were some increases in property tax revenues and things like that, but also some of the grant-funded projects occurred in two thousand and twenty-three. And then expenses went from seventeen point two million dollars in twenty-two to nineteen point five million in two thousand and twenty-three. A lot of those expenses, keep in mind, the grant-funded projects are going into capital assets, not expenses. The increase in expenses is mainly from that increase in that pension liability. So again, it's that pension accounting that's driving a lot of those increases. Slide eleven looks at business-type activities, again, over a more longer-term view. You can see revenues increased from ten point one million dollars to ten point six million dollars. And then you did have, you know, your expenses have been up around that ten-million-dollar threshold for business-type activities the last couple of years, which is up from twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And again, a lot of that is pension accounting-driven. So twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one actually had negative pension expenses as that pension liability was coming down, and now they're back up. So really, the expenses have been pretty steady outside of the pension accounting. Slide twelve looks at general fund revenues and expenditures. So this is back to the modified accrual basis, which is closer way you look at on the budgetary basis throughout the year. You can see revenues in the general fund have really been steadily increasing from two thousand and nineteen. They're about eleven point one million dollars in two thousand and nineteen, and now they're up to fourteen million dollars in, in two thousand and twenty-three. And expenditures have also been steadily increasing. I think, you know, twenty twenty, people were holding back on expenditures, not knowing what was going on with the pandemic, and then coming out, it's been pretty normal to see expenditures increasing, especially with some of the projects that you've had going on at City Hall and throughout the city. Slide thirteen looks at general fund property tax revenue. So an important, stable revenue source for the city and continues to be that. There's really been some steady growth. In two thousand and nineteen, property tax revenue is four point nine million dollars, and in two thousand and twenty-three is six point one million dollars. So we always say the good thing about property tax revenue is it's a stable source of revenue, and the bad thing is, it's a stable source of revenue. You're never gonna see huge growth in it, but it's good to see that kind of consistent growth over the last five years. And the last two slides look at some general fund metrics, looking at fund balance. So you can see with that increasing revenue, you've really built a solid general fund balance. In two thousand and nineteen, your general fund balance was five point five million dollars. And now, even with the decrease from last year, it's at nine point one million dollars. So good, steady general fund growth over the last few years. And that translates to slide fifteen, which looks at the fund balance in the general fund divided by total general fund revenues. So essentially, how much of your annual revenues are you supporting with your carryover in general fund? It's about sixty-five percent or seven to eight months of revenues that you have in your general fund at the end of fiscal year twenty-three. So that's a really healthy general fund balance. The G F O A would recommend no less than two months. And probably, once you get up to twelve months, then you have a story to tell on what type of projects you're saving for. So really, you're right in the middle of that range, which is a good, good, good place to be. Then the last two slides look at the enterprise fund. So we talked about business-type activities in aggregate. But the, this looks at your major enterprise funds, which is wastewater and water. You can see operating income has been decreasing over the last couple of years. Again, this is the pension accounting that's playing into this a lot, so the pension expenses are in this operating income and have been decreasing it. I think the next slide is more important to look at, which is the operating cash flow for those funds. And those funds have been generating positive operating cash flow pretty consistently. Wastewater, right around two million dollars. And water, around that one and a half million-dollar mark is one point two million dollars for two thousand and twenty-three. It's important for the funds to generate positive operating cash flow because it allows for investment in future infrastructure, paying down debt and things like that. So those funds look to have healthy cash flow as well. And that's all that I had to talk about. Thanks for listening to me. I'm happy to answer any more questions that you all may have. Okay.
I have a couple of questions, just for people who don't know you. How many, about how many cities or municipalities in Michigan do you audit a year?
In Michigan? I think we audit, I would say about fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm based out of our Columbus office, so we also audit sixty municipalities and counties in Ohio as well. So we do focus quite a bit on governmental entity audits.
Okay. So people could consider you an expert.
Yeah, that makes me nervous. I feel like there's a tough question coming up.
No, no, just wanna, I, I just wanna establish your credibility.
Yeah, yeah.
And to make sure that people understand that what they're seeing is based on years and years and years of experience.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
With regard to the increase in the pension liability, you kind of talked to the laws of the year that we had in two thousand and twenty-two. That's not unique to the city of Adrian, I assume. It's all over.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind that you guys are not controlling your investments. You're not really controlling much in the plan. I mean, you can control, you know, some of the inputs to that plan, but really, what's driving it is increasing cost of retirement, increasing life expectancy of people that are in the retirement plan, and poor investment performance drives that a lot. So there's, you know, built-in expectations, which again, you guys don't set the expectations of that plan, the, you know, you participate in a state plan. You have your own fund within that plan, but yeah, they're kind of controlling that. And so it's, you know, you do your job of, you guys have made your actuarial determined contributions. So you make that, and then it's kind of up to the, the market on what happens with the actuarial outcomes. Yeah.
I think it's important for the public to understand that as well.
Yeah, and, you know, there's been, I think, across the board, government pension plans are not, you know, well-funded. You compare yours to any government in Illinois, you'd say, wow, you're five times better funded than them. So, you know, it, it really varies state by state, but essentially, to your point, all governments in Michigan are about in the same boat. If you pick up any other government, they're gonna be in a similar situation to you.
Thank you.
What's the threshold to, with the pension liability to be on the, the watch list for the state? And where, and where do we fall?
Yeah, so you actually dipped just below the sixty percent funded threshold this year, which is what they set as now you have to give them kind of like it's a five-year plan, right, on how you're going to correct that. You know, my snarky response is investments in two thousand and twenty-three are doing good, so you probably already did correct it, but Nathan and Greg will put together, you know, what the five-year plan is, and they'll report on that annually for the next five years on how they are meeting that plan. But really, if I were to give advice, you would be to just continue making your actuarially determined contributions, and I think it'll turn around. You're no means at a place where I think you need to do something drastic to fix the plan, and just keep in mind, it's like turning a cruise ship is not gonna happen with one action. Any other questions or comments?
Anything else for Brian?
Thanks, Brian.
So if we could turn to the city attorney discussion for a minute now, I would like to try to work through that now so that we know where we're going when we get to the regular agenda. You saw my memo in your packet. You saw what my recommendation was. You also saw that per language of our charter, given that the firm I'm recommending has a familial relationship with one of the members of the city commission, that unanimous vote of the commission with that commissioner abstaining would be required to make that appointment. I, I've had some indication that there's not unanimity, and so I'd like to invite you all to kind of hash that out for a few minutes now if we can, because we'll need a Plan B if we can't go with Plan A. So I don't know if somebody is prepared to get started with that discussion, but I think it's better to use this time now to kind of try to figure that out. We have litigation coming up tomorrow. I mean, I think those cases are all going to be rescheduled per my last communication with the court, but the court will insist upon notifying our former attorney, who, as you know, resigned with immediate effect last Wednesday, at the close of business last Wednesday, and, you know, we, we need to give them someone else to whom to look as the city's prosecutor, so to speak, for code enforcement cases at least. We have contracts that need to be signed. Contracts need to be, have been reviewed by the city attorney or an attorney on behalf of the city before they can be signed. And so we can't be entering into contracts right now. So we've got business to do. We need to have a plan for how to do it. So let's please figure out how, what we're gonna do.
Greg, now, this is just for, you know, for, it's not a permanent hire at this time. It's just looking at for someone to fill until we find that as a permanent hire. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, that was, that, that's what we asked you to do. We asked you to appoint Mr. Castleberry's firm as interim city attorneys. The last time we were in this situation, which was about a two and a half years ago, in two thousand and twenty-one. That's exactly what you did, the city commission did at that time as well. They appointed an attorney to serve as interim until you could have some time to consider the matter. Now, in that case, they found they were satisfied with the work that was being done at that time, and so they ended up appointing that firm to the permanent possession. But yeah, the problem with sudden resignations, which was the case last time as well, is that we have to act quickly. You're required to act on the acceptance of the resignation at your very next meeting, which is tonight. So that's also on your agenda at the regular meeting. But we, for the reasons that I described and more, we really need to have someone who can act in a capacity as the city's attorney on a day-to-day basis.
And can you tell me about the Lucas Castleberry? Do they currently represent any municipalities, any public interest or anything like that?
They, they do, and I mean, so I've been around, you know, Washtenaw County and Lenawee County for a long time, and as you know, I've practiced as an attorney for many years. You know, and I, and I always understood the predecessor firm was, so there was a firm and going back, way back to when I was with Pittsfield Township, which was in the eighties and nineties. The firm that represented us was called Redding and Edder at that time, and their junior partner at that time was a fellow named Vic Lilick. And as Redding and Edder firm evolved, and the original partners retired, Vic kind of took on most of the communities that they had represented in Washtenaw County, which were a great deal of the small communities, essentially those that didn't, many of those that didn't have in-house counsel. So the city of Ann Arbor, for example, has a staff of attorneys that work as employees of the city. But smaller places have contract attorneys. And so he had a, a lot of those in Washtenaw County. In this county, Fred Lucas had probably most of the municipalities, there are no, what I would call large municipalities in this county, but he had most of the municipalities in this county. At this point in time, the Castleberry-Lucas firm has both Fred Lucas and Vic Lilick as part of that firm. And so the range of options for small municipalities for people who have experience with those municipalities is pretty limited outside of the Castleberry-Lucas firm, which is the reason that I discussed this opening with Burke. And I was heartened to see that he was willing to step in on very short notice and, and handle that. And so that's why I recommended what I did. Well, in terms of where I stand on this whole issue, first of all, I think that we need to have a local attorney. We've seen, you know, we've tried it the other way. We've hired a big firm. That didn't work out for us. We really weren't getting the representation we asked for. I think Mr. Castleberry is a well-respected in the community. He's local. We won't have to pay mileage fees. And his rates are reasonable compared to other municipalities. And I don't know that we could get better representation anywhere than hiring Burke Castleberry and his firm to represent us as city attorneys.
I would have to agree. I think it's important for us to have somebody local. I think it's important to have someone who has the experience that his firm brings to the task at hand. I think it's imperative that we move flawlessly from one resignation to a, a new group of people that will represent us, take care of us. I think it's imperative that we, we move quickly on this. It's a no-brainer for me. I think it's an absolute perfect move for us.
I'd like to hand out a couple handouts. First is, you pass that down, please. First is the, the fact that I, I agree with the statements made here tonight, that Burke is the, the best choice for the commission. However, we're faced with something that's contained within the city charter specifically relating to anti-nepotism. And if we were sitting in Tecumseh having this discussion tonight, either, even in the role of an interim position, we would not be able to move forward because it says that they would be disqualified from holding any appoint of office or employment during the term which the said official was elected. The same is true for the city of Celine. And when we look at the purpose of these policies, it's not through the fact that this isn't a concern specifically related to the fitness or the ability or the skill of Burke. But if we look at the purpose of nepotism policies, the policy is intended to ensure effective supervision, internal discipline, trust, and positive morale in the workplace, and seeks to avoid the appearance of, or potential for favoritism, conflicts of interest, the appearance of impropriety, and conflicts of loyalty associated with nepotism. So again, this, this, and my, my concern here is our role as a public body portraying to the public our trust and our confidence that we are moving forward appropriately. I know when I talked with Mr. Galouli, not Mr. Galouli, Mr. Elliott, he made reference to a so outside of the charter, through the ethics clause that lawyers operate under, there was a case that was brought up and referred specifically where a municipality's mayor was being sought to have their brother move forward to be the city attorney. Now, it's important to point out that while the, the Ethics Board ruled, therefore pursuant to MRPC one point seven B, the lawyer may represent the municipality on those matters in which the mayor and the municipality have no differing interests as long as the client municipality consents. If the representation were a single isolated matter, the conflict analysis could be readily handled on a case-by-case basis. If the contemplated representation were to be an ongoing one, however, we question whether such an agreement is practical for the municipality and properly serves the interests of the public. And they continue to go on to note that it is clear, the closer, the closer the familiar relationships, the more strict the ethics rules. Later on, they point out as well that Later on, they point out as well that if um the lawyer could not represent the municipality manners in which the interests of the mayor and the municipality differ. Disclosure and consent of the municipality to representation by the lawyer would uh not uh vivitate uh the conflict, and the lawyer could not ethically continue to represent the municipality in such situations. So therefore, we continue to be driven by conflict. Is the conflict impugnative um to the entire law firm? And under current standings, if the firm um could not, if a conflict arises, the firm could not undertake representation of the family member uh could not provide directly. So therefore, the entire law firm would be discluded from representing the city um if there was a a conflict in this case. So on the heels of a conflict that we had with our most recent uh ci- city attorney as it relates to the county um and going back to the concerns related to the public trust related to the ethics ruling that an ongoing um relationship between uh the lawyer and the municipality is called into question compared to a case-by-case basis. I I question our ability to maintain public trust uh in this instance.
So when it comes to um our decision about hiring um a new city attorney, obviously Commissioner Castleberry would have to recuse herself from that vote. Once that's done, if we hired Mr. Castleberry and his firm, um Commissioner Castleberry will only be one vote. And you know, the re- she'll have no direct individual influence over the city attorney in that case. And I, you know, my opinion is uh if she recuses herself from the hiring process uh and we hire uh Burke, um I don't see that as an ongoing problem, and I don't see as an ongoing conflict because she can't do anything um without the votes of the rest of the commission. So I I don't have a problem, and I don't see it as um uh an issue that we should be fighting over.
I I don't see it as a problem because what she's she abstains or whatever feasibly could happen. And then we elect or approve his appointment as the interim. Interim. Then we move forward. And if he's the highest qualified net firm is by the judgment of us commissioners, we'd hire that firm. Knowing that she only has one vote. If there's a conflict, she's got one vote. If that's a swing vote, I'm not sure that would ever happen. But I'm saying I have faith in ethics that he has and the quality of character person that she has, and I don't see that as a major con.
I think it's also important for us to make sure that that all of us respect the integrity and the honesty and the the ethics that all of us bring to this position. All of us individually and all of us as a group. I think it's imperative that we respect that and honor that and look forward to seeing us move towards a higher level. I don't want to be compared to another city. I'd like to compare from time to time to see what other cities do. But I think it's important for us to remember we're in Adrian, and we're here, all of us, elected to do a job. And we're working very, very hard to bring that kind of integrity and strength to this position and to this group.
Can I can I ask you, Greg? What um if you were to put a percentage number on it, what would be the like percentage of time that is that the city attorney is doing code enforcement, um legal action? Uh you know, I know you said like they're, you know, they're obviously looking at the contracts and making sure on that. But like, can you just timeline out like what their ti- like what they're doing most of the time for us, I guess?
Well, hey, an easier way to put it is probably what percentage of the job is eh eh in direct directly advising the city commission.
Yes, that's where I'm going.
And I would say that's maybe ten ten percent of the job. The majority of the job relates to uh the attorney's role with when what within what our city code calls uh the administrative service. And so the administrative service is under the direction of the administrator. And uh you know, involves code enforcement amongst other things, but contract review, other legal representations on behalf of the city. We get into litigation over other matters as well from time to time. That's most of the job, or just giving advice to me or other uh department heads. Uh yeah, that's the bulk of the job. Yeah, I don't, you know, I'm familiar with the uh ethics opinion that Commissioner Banky read. I, in fact, I I referred him to it. Um yeah, I don't know what that city was. Mayors can have different roles within cities. Some mayors are strong mayors. I don't know whether a strong mayor or a weak mayor. If it was a strong mayor form of government, it would be analogous to you know, uh the city attorney being my sister. Right? But it's a very different thing as Commissioner Gauss said, if uh to be a member of a city commission, right? You're one vote, and the city commission can only take a position uh through four votes, or in some cases, more. This is one of those cases. In this case, it takes six votes. But it speaks through its resolutions. And if you think about, you know, the number of things that we've had divided votes on, you know, whatever they are, uh you know, how many of those they say it's an ordinance that we're being asked to approve, and one member or maybe three members are opposed to that. But at the end of the day, or the ordinance passes or it doesn't pass, that is not then a legal matter that goes to the city attorney. Right? That's not, that would not create a conflict because the city attorney doesn't have to do anything about that. That's a fact. It either passed or it didn't pass. You know, the I the I, as I've tried to think about what could be a conflict, other than you know, direct litigation between the city and a member of the commission, I can't even imagine how one single commissioner could have a position, right? That would be in conflict with the city as a whole because they can only express their one vote, and one vote doesn't create a position. Uh so, you know, our charter says what it says about this, though. And I I don't think you should, I think you gotta be careful that that while the ethics opinion is instructive, the ethics opinion is incumbent upon the lawyer. Like, the lawyer has a duty to abide by the Michigan Rules of Professional Conduct. That's not, that's got nothing to do with us. A lawyer couldn't undertake a representation that they didn't feel was consistent with the with the ethics rules that we have as an attorney, as attorneys. Uh our our standard for making this decision or not is contained in section five point one four of the charter, the anti-nepotism provision in this case. And what that charges you with determining is whether the best interest of the city shall be served. And you all have to agree, all six of you, that are entitled to vote on the matter, that the best interest of the city would be served by selecting this firm. That but that's the stamp. That's that's what you're here to consider.
What would be the timeline? Because if this doesn't happen, then we got contracts assigned and there's lots of things like that to do. I mean, what, I mean, before we could find someone that to to do it. If we didn't do this, first of all, I think, and I'm gonna piggyback on Mr. Miller, Mr. Gauss, I think with the experience that that law firm has with the quality of attorneys that have represented the municipalities as an interim, I think that's a good move for us right now. They're willing to do it. It's an interim position. It gives us time to fully search and fully look for everybody. And if it so happens that we come back and you're the most qualified and fit the needs of the city, so be it. But I'm looking, we've got a gap right now. We need to take care. Then we can sit down. We can hold whatever process that the city's done in the past, and they're hiring of the permanent one. And then we can move forward.
You know, I agree that our job here is to do, uh make all of our decisions in the best interest of the city. I have no doubt on the integrity of the Castleberry firm or of Commissioner Castleberry. Commissioner Castleberry has a long history of public service. And her qualifications and her integrity have never been in question. And for that very reason, again, she can recuse herself from the hiring decision. But after that, I don't think that there's any reason to question that anything she did, first of all, again, back to the point that, you know, she's only one vote. And uh again, I don't question her integrity. I don't question Burke's integrity. And I don't see where we're gonna have a problem if we hire Burke on a interim basis.
Uh going back to Commissioner Schwartz's uh uh sort of inquiry. I mean, like I said, the last time around, we made an interim selection very quickly. Uh um similar circumstances. Took our time to evaluate uh that representation and decided to continue it uh uh up until this time. Prior to that, I was not here, but I'm aware of the process that was used. Uh sort of uh an RFQ went out uh at that time, and uh I think uh subcommittee was appointed uh to evaluate people and make a recommendation. Obviously, that's a much lengthier process. Uh the city had time to engage in it. I think, in fact, because uh uh Mr. Castleberry was willing to step in as interim at that time as well. He was county prosecutor at that time, and he he stepped in on very short notice and was able to keep us covered so we could go through a process like that. We don't have uh that option available to us uh right now. Uh in fact, it's, you know, hesitate to say, but it's conflict with the county that has led us to this position, in fact. And so uh we we would have to do something else. And so, like I say, if if we're not gonna proceed with plan A, then we have to have a plan B tonight, uh because we can't really leave this building tonight without somebody to represent us. We have hearings coming up besides the ones that will be rescheduled tomorrow. There's others on uh January second, which you will not, though you meet that day, not you will not meet for court convenes that day. Uh and there are other matters, contracts and such, that need to be executed uh to keep uh the city's business going on.
Which other municipalities in Lenawee County, are there any adjacent to um not want someone that was representing on an adjacent um community?
Uh I think what I said is that that was what Fred Lucas had always had as his position. Uh you know, back, I talked to him back at the time. I think that Mr. Galouli uh became our attorney. And he he always had that rule, but he was one guy. He didn't have a firm of people at that time. Uh his s- position obviously has changed on that now that he's merged with a number of other attorneys who do represent uh uh a a broad range of municipalities. The same analysis would ensue from my perspective, you know, if um we had somebody who also represented an adjoining municipality. Yeah, it doesn't, there's the there's nothing magic about it being adjoining. The question is, what's the potential for conflict? Right? Uh you know, it back in the day, we had a lot of conflict with Madison Township because we were annexing their land. We have not had a conflict with them during my tenure here, and I I think for many years prior to that. So I don't, I I don't know that that would be a true problem, you know. Uh I think their firm represents Tecumseh. Likewise, we have great rapport with Tecumseh right now. Could something come up someday where there's a conflict? Sure. I mean, that that can always happen with when you have uh uh you know, a broad range of clients. Back in the day, when I was with Pittsfield, we used Miller Canfield as bond counsel. One day, Miller Canfield called me up and said, we're gonna sue you. We you could either consent to the to the lawsuit, or we're with gonna withdraw as your attorneys. I mean, that's what they were required to do. We consented to the to them doing it because we wanted to keep him as bond counsel. Right? Bond counsel's hard to come by. But you know, that would be the, that would be what would happen at that time. If a conflict arose between two of your clients, what should happen is you have that conversation. You consult with your clients. They can consent to your continued representation, but if they do not consent, then you're gonna have to withdraw from one of those representations, or potentially both if the if if you your conflict is imputed to your firm.
And and I raised that point just for the fact that we just last week had a conflict between um in the exact same situation.
Right.
And that I grow cautious of of that on top of the public trust.
Over over the long term, that's, you know, that's something that should be considered. Uh personally, I, you know, I don't think we're in a position where we're likely to be in conflict with our co-equal neighbors so much as, you know, I didn't have any trouble seeing the conflict with the county coming, quite frankly. Uh and I did speak to our former counsel about that, uh when he chose to take that on. But but again, we're, for the moment, we're talking about interim representation. And so the likelihood of that occurring, you know, eh within the timeframe uh that I would envision for interim representation is very, very slow.
Um my my world interim representation with interim superintendence is the process needed um to go through a search and then name um a replacement. Um you know, in terms of that, filling that that bill because um in in my head uh going down the line from interim to permanent doesn't remove the the nepotism component within the charter, and that's not resolved. Um in terms of that image of public trust. So I guess what I would say is I would be willing to bend with um the an interim contract with um a component uh between now and you know, February sixteenth, which gets us, you know, a month and a half down the line to address um the the issue related to what the um what the permanent city attorney would be, um hopefully without conflict.
Well, that would be up to, you know, the the Castleberry Lucas firm as to whether they're willing to do that. But that is what is proposed. Uh we we don't have a, we don't have an end date.
Right, yeah.
But but it is an But it is an interim appointment and it is at, it is at our will. And so we can end it at, in February or at any time based on the, the terms of the contract.
If, if you would like my vote tonight, I would like to see an end date.
Yeah. And so I would just, you know, amongst yourselves determine what process you're going to want to engage in and make sure you give yourself enough time to do that. And then I would invite a response, I guess, from Mr. Castleberry, if he's willing, as to whether that would be a contract he, he would entertain. And if not, then we still have to come up with another solution.
Do we have anything pending that could be like with an adjacent community or something like that, that you can see in the near future that we would have a conflict? Because they're being represented by that law?
No, I may not rapport with our neighboring communities right now. I don't have hardly any rapport with Madison, but we also don't have any discord with them. But the other townships, great rapport, you know, those that are part of the Trail Authority. I, I can't envision that, no. If, if a conflict comes up, a conflict that's defined by the rules of professional conduct comes up, then yes, like I said, they would have to consult with both those clients and determine whether those clients would consent to the continued representation.
I just know from going through the city administrator search and the process of that, I would just like to say that if you want to put an end date on, I think it needs to be a little farther out. I just know that it's not enough time. Sorry, from doing that before, I, I feel like it maybe needs to be like at least four months. That's just my thought on that. I, I maybe even longer. I don't know, but I just know that that process is not an easy process. Because it's not, you know, just putting it out there and having people submit resumes, but you know, there's a lot of steps to go through and, you know, in meeting with the commission and, and all of, all of those steps that have to take place. I don't know if two months is enough time. If that's the route we want to go, that's how I feel about that. Um, I do know that the reason I asked that question about how much was on enforcing the code and, and things like that is, you know, A, I would like to say, you know, this is a contracted employee. It's not like a city employee, like it's not like a department head. It's not like Greg that, you know, which the department heads don't answer to us anyways. They answer to Greg, but it's not like Greg that answers to us because a contracted employee is a little different, even though I know we're advised and there is, you know, there, there is that communication. I just want to keep that in mind. It is a contracted employee. So that's a little bit different. But the other thing is that, you know, a lot of that is just following the code, you know, what's in the code and following through on the legal aspect of that. Making sure that we are, our municipality is protected and safe by, you know, looking at any of these documents, contracts, things that come through and just protecting us. It, it, it really, we hardly had any, I don't want to say interaction, but because we did have interaction, but it, there, there's really not a lot that comes to the commission from the city attorney. Like you said, maybe like 10% where there is some advising and in certain situations, but it's just the main, I guess, what I'm getting at is the main part of what I saw the last two city of attorneys doing really was not anything that we were in that day to day. It wasn't a conflict with us. And I guess I don't, I'm sorry, I don't see where the conflict, I'm having a hard time seeing where the conflict would be within the commission. I do understand though, your concerns on the nepotism, you know, I'm always concerned about that. I would, you know, have high concerns if it was the city administrator, that, that would be even, you know, a different story, but um, I do know also just that I do feel it is pertinent that it is somebody that is local, that, that has those connections within the court system. Maybe we can get things going through a little quicker. When it comes to that, just because of that, that familiarity, that the, the local, the local firm. But also I just know, you know, that the ethics and, and the person that Burke Castleberry is, I have full faith in, in, in what he can do in this job. And, and you know, I, I've sat in his office before, sorry, I'm going to call you out. And he's like, well, Burke Castleberry says it really, he's being really picky about this. I feel like this could go, but he says no. It was something they were talking about. So I know how particular he is and how safe he would be to, I mean, and what I mean by safe and protecting us, he's, he's just really thorough and he really, where there might be gray areas, you know, he's not really going into that gray area that sometimes can happen. It's very, he, he's just, he's very thorough and I just have that full confidence. So just put that out there. But I, I, you know, I understand and I, I just feel the end date, it, that's, that's scary just because we've gone through this before. I feel like that's way too fast if that's where we were doing it. I don't, I don't see, and I don't, what I don't want to see is that a hurried situation to get somebody that, then we're turning around and doing this again, because that is my concern when you do anything in that hurried fashion, if that's what we, you know, when we go to do that search.
Somebody suggested four months. Was four months palatable? Three? Considering the.
I'd say six, and I, I believe six months would be a better option just because we have so much going on in the courts right now and we really want to gain traction on Blight. And the only way we're going to gain traction right now is continuing to get traction in the court system. And I can't imagine that this law firm, firm is going to want to take on something for two to three months and then just drop it. It just doesn't seem like a good option for us and for that law firm. So I would be all in favor of saying six if the law firm is amenable to that.
I agree because most, I think six months because we don't want to rush a decision. I don't know what will happen six months from now. I don't know that we could search high and low. I don't know that we're going to find any firm that's more qualified, who's more in tune with what's going on in the city. We're going to have to continue to deal with the Crimson Holdings thing. And if we're going to do our best representation for our city and for the, for our citizens, we have to keep those things in mind. So six months, I can live with six months, but we're going to have to revisit it at that time. We can do a search. But again, I'll be open minded about it. But I think we'll have a very hard time finding an attorney who will do a better job than Castleberry and Lucas.
And correct me if I'm wrong. So in six months as, or three months or six weeks, when the search is complete, the commission will then need to be again unanimous in terms of the selection if there were to be a concern related to the nepotism clause.
It would always have to be unanimous if it was someone who had a familial relationship with the, the person or the firm being selected, you know, member of that firm that was being selected, yes.
Can we turn it to Burke to?
Yeah, I'm trying to get a number so I can ask him the question.
Or also get some input from him as well. Would, that's a possibility.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I didn't prepare a presentation. So three months is too short. I wouldn't be interested in that. Six months is reasonable. I mean, when you start a case, you, you can't just drop it. I mean, you know, you're going to spend money just to get caught up from where your last attorney was at. You know, there's no magic. I, I can't buy osmosis, learn all your cases overnight. I did set aside time tomorrow. I didn't know the cases had been adjourned, but I did, I did set aside time to start on those tomorrow. I think the big thing is communication. I've, I've talked to Administrator Elliott about this. You know, I, I think there needs to be a weekly meeting. And we need to, to concentrate on what the business of the city is. But I, I would be interested in six months, but I, I wouldn't be interested in less than that. It's not, I, I'm not going to put that much time and effort into something to a client that I'm going to lose. That's, that makes no business sense. But I would do six months. But I would, I would also be interested in looking at being the long term. I mean, I've, I've been a citizen of Adrian for 25 years. I stepped in before to help the city out when they didn't have an attorney. And I had to get permission from the county commission to do that. And, and they, and they granted that because we wanted to help the city. This city means a lot to me. I am really interested in this job. We do represent a lot of municipalities. But I got to tell you, we keep talking about conflict. I, I can't tell you the last conflict I've had. I mean, can it happen? Sure. And, and you address it. And you know, municipal attorneys are a small group. Greg, or excuse me, Mr. Elliott can tell you. We help each other out. If a conflict does come up, we have connections to, to, to be safe with the city, with the townships, the neighboring townships. That's not an issue to me. And I can tell you personally, I have my own code of ethics and I'm not going to put myself in a situation where I'm conflicted. So I don't know if that answers your questions.
Can you answer the, the question about perceived nepotism and the lack of public trust related to the community, community input that there's three Castleberries on the city of Adrian payroll?
Well, I mean, I, I don't see an issue. I don't answer to any of them and they don't answer to me. I mean, when you're talking about nep-
We do.
When you're, I answer to all of you together, but not individually. I don't answer to her in any way. And my son certainly doesn't. I don't answer to him and he doesn't answer to me anymore. As far as public trust, I mean, I spent the last 15 years as, as Illinois County prosecutor. I've done nothing but, I'm a veteran. I've served my community and I will continue serving my community. So if the public doesn't trust me, I, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I think you'd, you'd be hard pressed to find a more respected attorney than me.
And I agree.
I just don't see the perception of impropriety at all with your firm. At all. What could, could not happen.
It, it's, it's, I guess, is there a miniscule population possibly out there that there's some small perception of this? Maybe, possibly. But there were three of you who worked for the county at the same time.
Yes.
And there was never an issue in that 25 years or however long, no, well, you weren't there for 25 years. Sorry.
I was corporate counsel for 11 and, and I never ran into a conflict with my father-in-law on the commission.
Exactly. You're in the same position that you were with the county and there was no problem with public perception is what I'm trying to say.
I agree.
And you were elected and he was elected. New, excuse me. You were both elected numerous times and there was no public impropriety that I ever heard about. And obviously the public elected you both numerous times. And there was not an issue. So you guys know where I stand.
Thank you, Burke. I appreciate your answer and your honesty.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So if we're inclined to move forward with the resolution indicating that it would be for us a six month term. And it sounds like we could do that. If not, it sounds like we'd have to go to Plan B.
The recommendation would be first meeting in July then?
Yeah, that's, if that's your desire.
That, I mean, that's full, six full months under, under Burke's belt gives us an opportunity to, to plan, gives us an opportunity to continue to test the public trust and move forward from there.
Great. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Castleberry?
So would we just have to amend the agenda, I mean, amend that resolution when we get to it, just to add in a date of June 1st? Is that what?
July, July.
Or July 1st?
Yeah.
June 1st.
July 1st.
July. Oh, yeah.
Or whatever the first.
You're right, you're right, you're right. Sorry.
First meeting in July.
Yes, okay.
So yes, we will, we'll amend that resolution accordingly. So whoever makes the motion should have the language. We'll try to.
I'm going to get it in a minute here. Yeah.
All right. If we're concluded with that item, we can get back to our other items. The next item was further to the boards and commissions discussion. Commissioner Banky, I think you requested that item. Did you want to start off on that?
I know Kelly and I requested this together just to continue that conversation we had not too long ago about the fact that there continues to be a number of open seats on commissions. And also a little bit coming up later tonight, the fact that the commission placements have been three years or two years, the length of the term for the, the openings, basically as the openings have been set. And the possibility of looking at, do we begin to align our commissions to start January 1st? And then just as we would with our own individual terms, have the remainder of those filled for that term? On top of the fact that there's quite a few openings on these boards and commissions. And how do we as a commission work together to get those appointments settled? What's the interview process? We talked a little bit about in the past and how do we move those recommendations forward? And Kelly, I'm happy to defer to further conversation.
We, when we talked about it at the pre-meeting, I think it was about a month ago, we discussed putting a committee together. So Mayor, if you would be interested in putting a committee together of commissioners to help create some criteria to start getting interest in those boards and then getting some interviewing going with those boards, I'd be happy to join. And I think that that will help get this ball rolling. And I think Commissioner Maki also said he was interested. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, you've both told me that. So.
Yeah, the committee together to get the ball rolling, to get get some people interested. Advertise some of the boards and commissions that we have out there. This is an important part of community, getting our citizens involved. And it gives us a lot of productive feedback when we have these seats filled.
I would be happy to participate in that as well, assuming that we're going to deal with Commissioner Banky and Commissioner Castleberry. I'd be happy to participate too. I've already been reaching out to some people on, on several of the committees.
How many, how many people do you propose to have on the committee? Because Open Meetings Act and all that kind of stuff.
I was going to say, because open meetings and things like that, you can't have more commissioners because, yeah.
And, and I've, since I, I do sit on the DDA as well. And so I go through all of those interviews for those positions and you know, that's what we're talking about here. And it's this kind of a setup and it really works well. And I feel like they get really quality people that know what they're getting into and are fully aware. And there's an excitement. And I think that's why when they have openings, they fill in pretty quickly again. Like they, they tend to, and I think it's because this system works. So I agree, like, you know, and that's exactly what you're proposing and it works.
Another thing is that I would like some information about the resolution or the possible appointees. Because one, this one person, I do not. Because one, this one person I do not know at all. Um, and so I'm asked to vote on someone that I don't know. And so that should be part of the committee. I'm requesting that to be part of the committee is that we, um, bring information to the, to the commission. So that we have a make and, we can make an educated guess.
Right. Yeah. Because they-
And I talked about that, that it almost like, I don't, almost like a resume, right? We discussed getting a, you know, somewhat of a resume together, um, so that we all have a strong understanding and we know that they're supported by the community. And, and have a strong background in the board that they'd like to serve on.
Cause they do, they, go ahead.
Because members of those boards do need to submit a, uh, application. Uh, so in, even if like, um, the, the one library person who's for a re-up, even on a re-up, you submit your application again. Uh, so having that would be helpful.
One thing I would like, it, I know that they expired, we're going to expire them all on the same day, but if it's a six-year term, I don't want it to be six years and then all of them terms expire.
Well, they, they would be staggered. Yeah.
So that we have consistency.
Right. Which, uh, would be my proposal moving forward with the consent agenda to remove the two library, uh, requests off the consent agenda and then have those appointed effective, uh, January 1st. So, I mean, just a matter of two weeks. Uh, so at least there's one start of two people being on the same, uh, appointment cycle.
I, I know you explained that to me once. Can you explain that one more time? So,
So there are-
How the cycles work so that not just me, but everybody understands how that works.
So when I was initially appointed to the library board, we were a brand new board. There were five members. Um, two members were appointed to a three-year term. Two members were appointed to a two-year term. And then one member was appointed to a one-year term. And all of us expired three years after that, that date. Well, of course resignations and everything else. So now you have one appointment expires on April 12th. Another one expires on whatever. So at least still keeping, um, that's as Matt says, as Commissioner Schwartz says, um, staggered so that all the commissioners on the board don't, um, expire at the same time and that there's some type of rotation on that. So in this case here, these two commissioners, January 1st, and who knows, the committee could continue to work on that. But that at least seems to make the most sense of a start date.
Organizes the calendar.
Right.
Oh, we're set up like that.
Yeah. We all set on that? You all, you all decided? All right. Uh, what is the time? Uh, I think the mayor can appoint the committee if, so that's her desire. We have 15 minutes left. The other item for our pre-meeting discussion was, as is our custom at our second meeting of the month, the strategic plan. Uh, I would note that, uh, Michelle is working on, uh, some, uh, graphics for the documents. So it will be, uh, more presentable on our website. But, uh, if anybody has anything, uh, uh, if they want to talk about for maybe 10 minutes, uh, now would be the time to do that. Um, uh, I would point out that, um, the, uh, so under one of the goal areas, we have, uh, uh, a, uh, one-year task of creating an ordinance, uh, for what's called, would have been called pilots for all, or seem to remember that anyway. I'm not seeing it at the, I think it, well, it must've been under economic development, but I'm trying to find it.
I don't recall that.
I remembered it. Did we not write it? We talked about it.
I know.
Oh, yeah. Here it is. Adopting and authorizing ordinance for residential pilot plans. Um, so with the housing study that I passed around to you all with my weekly report last week, uh, yeah, that is, that is an additional straight. We are doing many things within the zoning ordinance rewrite that will uh, attempt to encourage housing supply, uh, allowing for greater density in a number of ways and accessory dwelling units, which were things that were indicated by our comprehensive plan, which is policy that, that supports um, the adoption of the new zoning ordinance. Uh, but that would be an additional thing that, uh, would be an economic development tool, supporting a housing development. It's a, uh, you, you're all aware of what pilots were historically. They were available for uh, low-income tax credit housing projects. And you negotiated an amount that, uh, uh, they would pay as a percentage of rents. There are, I mean, pretty much by were back then by definition rental projects, uh, that you took in lieu of, uh, property taxes. That authority has been expanded to many kinds of housing projects now, not just, uh, light tech projects. And so we have identified as a, as a goal, setting up the authorizing uh, ordinance that allows any property in the city to potentially be such a project that still would have to come to you, be presented. You'd, you'd have to support the, uh, concept. But, uh, I think that's something we should work on, uh, very quickly here to at least have the authority in our, our code of ordinances to do that, uh, which we do not have right now, since it wasn't authorized until just very recently by the legislature in their, in their sessions last year. So that, that's something that's at the top of my mind based on, uh, the, uh, the housing study that came out, uh, so-called strategic plan, uh, for housing for the county as a whole. But, uh, something that we could do to, um, do our, do our, a bit of our share, if you will.
Hmm. Is there any movement on, uh, a communications position?
Uh, no, I would say not as, as yet. Uh, we've had discussions about what that would look like. It was a, a collection of things, uh, uh, that the commission had, uh, in mind for that person, marketing. Uh, and then they had a whole list of, of other things underneath it, not all of which necessarily fall within a communication marketing position. And so I have talked to our HR director about what she thinks that would look like. And she's looking around at other communities to see what, what they have as a structure for such a position. But that's as far as we've gone so far.
Under, um, enhanced community image, um, has there been any movement yet? I, I just don't know. On developing an enhanced reporting of burned out streetlights and a marketing campaign to explain that process? It's under our one-year goals. I'm just asking because I've just noticed a lot, myself even, that it'll be really dark in a certain area. And then I'm like, oh, that's because the streetlight is burnt out. But I just don't know if people are even reporting that or know how to. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do have a reporting system for it, but, uh, in terms of enhancing that, no, I don't think, uh, we've done anything yet to, uh, to promote that. Uh, I mean, the beauty of it is that when we, yeah, I, I joke with Matt every year at budget time because he always wants to swap out a number of streetlights to LED, which DTE will do, or consumers rather, will do for us as soon as they burn out. And I say, I'm not going to put that in the budget, but I will buy you a pellet gun to go around town. Take out as many streetlights as you can and get them replaced more quickly. So the beauty of it is that as soon as that happens, they're replaced with an LED, uh, fixture, which is to everyone's benefit. Uh, so, uh, there really will be a lot of bang for the buck in terms of getting people to report them. But, uh, uh, we've not specifically done anything on that task yet.
A comment I have on the streetlights and to LED, some things that I, it was brought up to me on Sunday at a grocery store and my wife and I were shopping. Uh, person asked me, he said, you know, have you really looked into that? And so of course I went and I Googled with all my technical skills. And, but I did find some interesting things.
By the way, I just had to fix his teams right before the meeting.
But when I did look it up and do some reading, they had talked about specific levels or the higher level was causing problems. And some of the cities, they were getting rid of it and going to a different type of light, a lower level than I think it was 5,005. I can't remember. Should have brought the numbers in.
Oh, if you send that to me, I'll share it with Matt.
Uh, just look up Google streetlights.
Okay. Okay.
LED streetlights.
Okay. I, I'll point him in that direction.
Could, could we hold and still stay with strategic plan for a sec? Okay. And then we can go to River View Terrace. Um, so, um, part of the strategic plan is communications and marketing of the city. And I, I just want to, uh, thank two people in the audience. Judith, I thought I saw you come in. Judith hiding behind over there and, uh, Jay Marks, um, they have both, well, Judith has taken upon herself to create a community calendar. Um, and she emails it out to residents in the area. Um, and Jay, at the recent DDA meeting, has expressed continued support and interest in doing a community calendar on our website. Um, and this is something that I'm very passionate about and hopefully we can merge the, the two or three different ideas on creating that calendar so that everyone in the community knows. But it is part of our strategic plan um, to, to enhance the community image and get more interest in marketing out there. So things are in happening. They may not be exactly part, like a bullet line there, but I can see parts of what the strategic plan um, states as happening in other organic ways. Um, one of the things with that strategic plan, again, with the marketing and communications is, um, like Jay sends out a weekly email to local businesses and people in the DDA and, and, um, the like. Um, we send out the, uh, um, weekly report, getting that put online. Um, so there are some things that are happening and I would seriously like to consider doing a weekly email from the city, much like the county does, their 60-second update. Um, much like what Jay does with Main Street DDA, much like with other communities, um, like Toledo, Wednesdays with Wade. It's a weekly newsletter that goes out. So, um, I look forward to continuing the communication piece.
Thank you. Uh, so River View Terrace, the, uh, uh, architects have indicated to us that the structural repairs to the building are now, now complete. Uh, that is not all the work that has to be done to make it fit for occupancy again, because uh, doing those structural repairs involve removing all the floor coverings and a lot of the wall coverings and things and and fixtures and such. And so that work continues, but, uh, the, the structure is now no longer in danger of collapse. Uh, and so we'll open College Ave, uh, adjacent to the, to that block, uh, a few weeks back.
In terms of our strategic plan and housing, that will open up quite a few, um, units for our, our community.
Yeah, that'll risk-
Near future.
Uh, by spring, I think has been their goal all along and, and they seem to be on track for that. It's 165 units, as I recall, which many of, some of those folks have stayed at the Adrian Inn and are awaiting return to, uh, Riverview, but many of them moved on to other parts of the state at that time, uh, because that's where the opportunities were. And so, uh, I think it will, i- i- it's not as though the same people will necessarily go back all into the same units. It will create a subadditional supply. You're, you're correct.
My apologies, Commissioner Castleberry. I didn't see where you were going with that.
Uh, Mayor, I, yeah, Mayor, I think it's probably time for public comment.
All right. At this time, we will, oh.
Turn myself off. Sorry. At this time, we will now begin public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. When we have exhausted all comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to all Zoom participants.
Terry Collins, Love and Scott Court, Adrian, not so much a comment, but a request. When you get a little long in the tooth, as I am and some of the other people come to these meetings, it comes with a hearing problem. Many of you, and I'm not going to point any fingers, but one of them I've known most of his life and his family, most of my life. In fact, I knew him when he had air. The, the problem I, I see is that many of you speak with a very soft voice. Many of you lean back in your chairs when you talk. And some of you taper off at the end to a virtual whisper. So a great deal of the time, at least myself, don't understand anything you're saying. So I would ask that you speak into your microphones, uh, unless you can turn the vibe of the microphone, but speak in so we can hear. Thanks.
Uh, Kirk Valentine, 969 West Malmese Street. Um, I'm one of the members of the Adrian Development Collaborative, the group that's brilliantly bought properties on North Winter Street. We're looking to do a revitalization. Um, you know, if you go all the way back to the blueprint for downtown, it talked a lot about housing and pushing housing into the city. And that's been a main goal of our group since we purchased the Telegram, the Access and the Eagles. And subsequently we purchased the old chiropractor's office. So the big goal has been to clean it up. And the secondary goal, of course, is to build housing. And I came to thank you for your support and the resolution that you passed at your last commission meeting in backing our grant application for the blight elimination program put on by the state land bank. Uh, we worked real hard on that grant and, uh, I'm not a professional grant writer and neither is anybody else in our group. But I think we put together a pretty formidable, formidable document that could have brought a million dollars into that project and into our community. So first I want to thank you for your support and that resolution. And that resolution was part of our application. And of course, you've probably heard by now that the application was not forwarded to the state. The county administrator and the county's attorney uh, decided there was some sort of liability issue. Now, we addressed all the liability issues. And for those of us that are in construction and understand how all this works, there's a lot of layers to liability and, you know, our group would carry liability. We, we would just name the county as an additionally insured. And all of the contractors and vendors and agents and everybody else that would have had something to do with that project would have all been insured and carried liability insurance. And as well, they would have also named the county as additionally insured. So with all the different layers that were there and would have been put into place, um, we really don't understand why our application wasn't forwarded because we felt that this was a really great opportunity. Uh, they were federal ARPA funds and there was a pile of them and there were limits on how much each state could get or each county could get. So Detroit, Flint, Saginaw couldn't gobble it all up. So I think we would have had a really, really good shot at getting some of those funds. So as we move forward, uh, we'll continue to hopefully work with the city. And we're going to find a solution for this. And I've told everybody, if we were just doing, uh, a building, the, the brownfield process would work fine, but we're trying to do a- the the brownfield process would work fine, but we're trying to do a block. So the financial limits that are in the in the brownfield process don't work for a block. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Murray, one zero zero four Sawmill Court. And just following up on some of the things that Kirk said, but first, Mr. Elliott, I think our police chief would like to chat with you after this about that pellet gun comment that you made there. And so I I wish to thank the commission and the city staff for their willingness to support the Winter Street redevelopment project. We all see this project as fulfilling a major part of the downtown redevelopment plan in place at the city. We were recently denied the opportunity to present our proposal to the State Land Bank by the County Land Bank Authority. This project required a local land bank administration and their involvement. We realize that the county has not administered a grant such as this in the past and that it would have involved the county at least at some level. Our concern in there was how well we were able to work with and communicate with the county. As it turned out, the partnership with the county is very minimal at all, as what we see in terms of the cooperation and collaboration between the administrative staff and our group. And we'd like to think that we worked over months with all the parties involved to try to get everybody on the same table, recognizing that this isn't something that normally they would have done. But if we have a true partnership with the county, then we work together to try to get what both the city and the county need out of this. As we were meeting repeatedly with the land bank, we're looking out the window at Winter Street. And they all see the same things. And the county, sometimes we think, forgets that they actually live and work in the city. I mean, they're here, so we don't expect any particular extra support, but they are members of an area that meets right here in our city. And we expected a level of support that we did not get from them. And so we just wanted to thank you for everything that you've done so far. And that this has to be a public private partnership. This ground has been contaminated and polluted by generations well before us. And there's zero chance of this project happening if we can't figure out how the county, the city and the private sector work together. So we're a long way from getting this done. We've done two and a half years of work. We've got a lot done, but we need your partnership, the county's partnership, the state's partnership in order to clean up this mess and get this turned around. We have a beautiful opportunity to make this a stellar part of our community, including the county. And so anything that we can do together in the future, we really appreciate it. And we just really thank you for being on board and supporting what we've done. We will continue to work on this, but, you know, it just seems to us like we get kicked sometimes when we should expect support. And we just, again, thank you for your support.
At this time, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants.
Hi, Mayor Glenn Preston.
Go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to say that as a code enforcement officer.
Can you state what you do? Can you just state where, like, what entity you're with, please? Thanks for the public.
One thirty five East Mommy Street, City of Adrian code enforcement officer. I'd just like to state that back in the day, Burke Castleberry, as the county prosecutor, became the city, uh, city attorney, as far as they went to prosecuting code enforcement violations. He was absolutely perfect. If I had an issue, I could go talk to him and he would resolve it right then. Not only that, we have a lot of demolitions coming up, including the buildings downtown, one sixteen, one eighteen, one twenty South Main that need contracts signed by an attorney. We cannot go without an attorney for any length of the time. We have court cases coming up tomorrow. We have a bunch coming up on the second of January. So I would just ask that all of you support Burke and his firm as on an interim basis, so we can keep going with what we're trying to do from a code enforcement standpoint. Thank you.
Scott Marvin, Sand Creek Highway, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate if the commissioners could speak up into their microphones. There's one that didn't have his microphone on at all, so I couldn't hear anything. So I'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and we will begin our regular city commission meeting at seven twelve, that gives us six minutes, is that good? All right, seven twelve. Hey. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Benke.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members, present.
I would like to move that we move item CR twenty-three dash one fifty-six and one fifty-seven to the regular agenda, please.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda without CR twenty-three dash one fifty-six and CR twenty-three dash one fifty-seven?
I'm moved to do that.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Approved with unanimous vote.
Moving on to Resolution R twenty-three dash zero forty-two is from Finance. It is a resolution to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any, is there any public comment on this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments on this resolution? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to Resolution twenty-three dash zero four three. It is from the city commission. It is a resolution to accept the resignation of John Galouli and Garren Lukow Miller, P.C. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-three dash zero forty-four is from the city commission. It is a resolution to appoint Castleberry and Lucas as interim city attorney. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
I would like to add to the resolution that this appointment will be reviewed at the commission's July first, two thousand and twenty-four meeting with the intent being to make a a permanent appointment at that time.
So that'll be our motion, because it was that resolution was amended. May I get a second on that?
Well, the the makers need to indicate whether they accept the amendment.
Yes.
I accept it. Yes.
Are there any public comments about this resolution? Any commissioner comments in regards to this resolution? We have a motion from Commissioner Benke. Was it, it was from, it was from Schwartz. Okay, we were debating that over here. We were sorry about that. Yes, we we were actually debating that. That's why I was a little slow on public comment. So from Commissioner Schwartz with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Abstain.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Resolution approved with amendment by six zero vote with one abstention.
CR twenty-three dash one fifty-six will now be Resolution R twenty-three dash zero forty-five is from the city commis, sorry, commission. It is a resolution to appoint Brenda Rigdon to the Adrian District Library Board. With, and you can, when you make your motion, you may begin, you can add the amendment to it when you do it.
Right, I would so moved with an amendment that the three year term would start effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution?
Hello.
Any commission, oh, yep, go ahead.
Hi, Wookiee Ramos, Vice President of the Library Board. I just want to say that the library board has reviewed this person and thinks they would be an excellent addition to our board, so I hope that you vote in favor. And thank you for your time.
Are there any commissioner comments?
Just that Brenda was the architect that did the remodel for the library and has been involved with the library over the past number of years. So great to see her on on the board now.
We have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted with amendment.
CR twenty-three dash one fifty-seven is now Resolution R twenty-three dash zero forty-six from the city commission, a resolution to reappoint. I'm going to say it for me, help me.
Amory.
Amory Ream Taylor to the Adrian District Library Board. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved with an effective date of January first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution?
Hi, Wookiee Ramos, still Vice President of the Library Board. I'd just like to say that she has been a wonderful help on our board, actually providing me. And I hope that you support her and put her back on the board. She's a major part of it. And we can always say great things about her.
Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Benke.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted with amendment.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? All right, so moving on, it'll now be public comment time. If you are inside the city chambers, we ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and address, and you will see the time limit on your screen. Once we have exhausted all public comment within the city chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Hi, Judith Hammerly, eleven eighty-three Glendale Avenue in Adrian. There are a couple of students who came in here tonight. And I said, oh, are you here for the city commission meeting? And they said, yes. And I said, all of it happens before this. One of the things that I'd really like to suggest is better information to the community about when deliberation happens, what kinds of things are coming up. I'm on Gordon Goss's email list, and so he sends me the agenda and also what time it actually starts. If we could get that out to more people, I think it'd be better. And I'm not sure what they're going to get for their Adrian High School and Sand Creek reports, but maybe something better will come of it. Thank you.
We will now open it up to all Zoom participants. Please state your name and address, and you will see your time limit on the screen as well. Not hearing any public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Castleberry?
There was a little conversation tonight about my family. And I would just like to say that my family has an incredibly long history of public service, specifically in the city of Adrian.
Commissioner Castleberry, I'm going to interrupt you again, but could you speak into your mic more, please?
I'm trying, sorry. My grandfather was an Adrian city firefighter. My great grandfather was a law enforcement on the railroad back in late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. My father was an Adrian police officer. My uncle was an Adrian police officer. I have cousins that have worked at the sheriff's department, cousin-in-law at the Adrian Fire Department, cousin right now at the sheriff's department, and my son is at APD. Clearly, public service has been instilled in my family for generations, as my son is now a fifth generation public servant to the city of Adrian. I'm the lone veteran sitting at this dais, and I'm an Iraq combat veteran having served during Desert Fox. After the military, I continue to serve, working with the state, county and city as an anti-human trafficking advocate and still maintain that advocacy. I have served for years as a crime victim advocate, a child forensic interview and a homeless advocate, just to name a few of my public endeavors. My husband and I left the military choosing Adrian as our home and the best place to raise our family. This community means a great deal to us. So much, my husband spent the first fifteen years of his law career as prosecutor, as well as a three-time elected prosecutor. We have raised public servants, as all three of our sons have served in the U.S. military in some capacity. Two are still serving, and one of them has gone on to work at APD, as I stated already. I owe each one of you my best and most just decisions. In the military, we take an oath to live with honor, commitment and courage. Those are the very roots that guide my integrity and decision-making process. I hope you all continue to see my family as humble servants of this community. I hope you all continue to help, advise, share with me ways to make the city safe and have a wonderful quality of life for all of us. I take my oath seriously and believe that I am thoughtful, informed and have genuine care and concern for this city. There's no room for arrogance or self-serving agendas up here. I appreciate each and every one of you, my fellow commissioners and the citizens for. for all the support you have given to me and my family, and then what you give back to my commissioners, and most of all, to the city of Adrian. I look forward to and hope you will continue on this journey with us. Um, I'm very happy to be here, and I'm very grateful for what happened this evening.
I would just like to acknowledge, um, somebody that gives a lot to our city at Christmas time, and that would be Jim Berryman, and just give him a public thank you for all the work he put into Comstock, uh, Riverwalk, the Tree Riverwalk is just amazing. There's been so many people down there. Last weekend was not even the tree lighting, and it was crazy. I just could not believe the amount of cars that were down there this past weekend. But the tree lighting was, um, just incredible. Thank you to Michelle and everybody at the city that had a hand and all, all of the DPW workers and everybody that had a hand in making that happen for the parade and for, um, the trees. And, um, just, it's such a great thing that I actually had somebody call me that was out of town, like far out of town, but they're from Adrian. And they said, will it still, will the trees still be up January fifth? Because they're bringing people in from out of town, but the lights probably still won't be on at that point. But, um, they're, they're, they were so excited after seeing the pictures. So everybody's out there promoting it, and it's just such, it's such a beautiful, um, time for our city to sell, and, and just a great way to celebrate, um, the season and just, um, our beautiful downtown and our, in our beautiful city, and just appreciate that. But it's really nice to see all the families and just that great quality of life happening, um, every single day when I drive by the park. So, um, I know it's a ton of work that Jim Berryman puts in, countless hours. Um, he is down there every time I drive by, and I drive by there every day on my way to work and every day on my way home, and he's always there because I see his car there. So that's why I know he's there all the time. But, um, just thank you for, um, all of that. And just thank you to all of the city workers that have put so much time and energy into it as well. And, um, we just really, um, appreciate that. And happy holidays, everyone.
The, uh, Lenawee County Educational Foundation has released their scholarships for graduating seniors. So, uh, great opportunity, but yet a narrow window. And I do know that, uh, many of those scholarships, uh, go unclaimed or very few people apply. So encourage, uh, you to check, uh, those out. There's a new one there for City of Adrian residents, uh, graduating. And also talking about Judas' calendar on January ninth, from one thirty to two thirty, and January twenty second, from five thirty to six thirty, uh, community conversations at the library with, uh, your commissioner here.
Mr. Elliott, would you, uh, let everyone know the schedule for city offices closing for this week, please?
Uh, yeah, City Hall will close at two PM on Thursday. Um, that's when we have our holiday party. Uh, our celebration, or our observation, rather, of, uh, Christmas Eve is Friday, so we'll be closed Friday. Obviously, Monday is Christmas Day. Uh, we'll also be closed, reopen eight AM on the twenty-sixth.
And that doesn't mean that nothing's happening. I'm sure.
No.
Chief Emrick and, uh, many people are still working for the city over, uh, Christmas. And I'd really like to thank all of the city workers who have to work over next weekend when the rest of us, um, will be celebrating. But if there are issues that arise, we've had a number of water main breaks. There's still a phone number to call that, that will be addressed.
There's a phone number to call, there's call-in procedures. People are standing by if, if need be. Uh, just to finish up on the holiday hours, uh, the following week. So the twenty-ninth will be the observation of New Year's Eve. So will City Hall be closed that day. And then obviously, uh, New Year's Day is the, the following Monday, and then back on January second. And you all will meet that night, too. So don't forget.
Yes. Thank you.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.